Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call this meeting to order. We have six board members present and one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you everybody for being here. We'll reconvene our regular meeting at 7:06 p.m. Just a bit behind. We have our rule call. We have all six board members except for Ms. McFarlane who is absent today. We'll all rise for our pleasure of allegiance. Thank you.
Salute the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have our report on items from the closed session. Conference with legal counsel. Claim 650811. Motion by Mr. Navas, second by Ms. Alexander. Board approved claim 650811 by the following vote of six ayes and one absent. Personnel matters, public employee appointment, employment. We have motion by Ms. Porter and second by Ms. Stroh. And board approves the appointment of Ed Gurkey as elementary principal effective 2025-2026 school year and location to be determined by the following vote of six ayes and one absent. We have motion by Ms. Porter and second by Ms. Alexander to approve Tim Shepherd as the principal alternative program at Turner Academy effective 2025-2026 school year by the following vote of six ayes and one absent. one absent. And we have our superintendent's report.
I have nothing to share with you. Move ahead.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have public comments on consent agenda A. The public may address the board on consent agenda A, routine business. Each public speaker shall limit their comments to three minutes, and please state your first and last name. Thank you.
Dr. Ball, in advance of that, we will be pulling item A16, just so you're aware. We will bring that back at the next board meeting when Mr. Warren is present and is able to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, so we are welcoming comments for all items except for A16.
President, Dr. Ball, members of the board. So I'm looking at, it's item A4, the purchase order detailed report, and there were, there was something called class learning. There were 13 entries, each for about $215,000, well over that. So the total was about, just under $3 million. So I was just having, wanted to know why, what this was for, because that's a lot of money.
One clarification, are you saying class learning or class leasing?
Um, I thought it was class learning. Let me look. I've been... Let's see, I know it's, first note is on page seven. Oh, class leasing, you're right. Class leasing. Can't read my own writing.
Edith, do you have something about it? Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Ball, members of the board, Superintendent Young, those are the portables for the bridge program.
Okay.
On class leasing.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Ball, members of the board, Superintendent Young. I see consent agenda, item 1415, we have working on the softball fields for Lodi High School. We do need it. Those fields are in very district spare. I've been asking for a while to have personnel so we can address these baseball fields and keep them safe. Also, since 2020, California has adopted a lot of regulations when it comes to their watering needs, and Lodi Unified does not have the manpower to address them. So please consider that we need more manpower to address these ball fields so we can keep them safe, and you don't have to be spending millions of dollars to redo them every so often years. So, thank you.
Excuse me. When you said, not on a given...
Give me the look and talk across top, but you can ask the superintendent.
What would you consider appropriate need, like, what are we looking at need-wise for this, would you say? I mean, we kind of keep hearing this. I'm just curious, at 100 employees, what are we looking at need-wise to achieve this?
I can't give you the specifics on the number of irrigation or groundskeepers, but this has come out multiple times where I've readers brought this up, and concerns about maintaining after we build those, and that is something that both Edith and I have talked about, and that is something we certainly need to consider for the longevity of any decision you might make for new ball fields. So, understanding, I don't have an answer specifically today for what we would do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any board comments on consent agenda A?
A14.
Did you want to poll it or just?
I have comments, you said.
Sure, sure.
There might be somebody else with some, one eyebrow up, I don't know.
No, go for it.
Okay, A14 then. My understanding was that, are we going to leave that with MNO to satisfy the groundskeeping, or are we going to turn that over to the site? That was an issue when we brought up the designs. Remember, I heard from Mr. Young, he was going to make a site issue, and then I heard we might make an MNO issue. My experience with the pool, it's okay, over the last four years. It went from site, and then an MNO, I had to come in and take care of it because the site couldn't handle it, and it was better with MNO. So who is going to be at least the...
It will be both. You have a groundskeeper at each high school, but you also have additional needs that will be provided through the maintenance and operations department, anything with extensive irrigation and summer work that may need to happen to provide additional support. But it would be our maintenance and operations staff and the site groundskeeper, which would be different than a pool, which we have maintenance.
A tech addition.
Yeah, so.
It would be both.
So have we done that with other areas, fields, other schools? And it's been successful?
Yeah, I think we need to really pay attention as we build these and look at these that we are doing an adequate job. And I think that's Rodrigo's point, and we're not in disagreement with that.
Yeah.
And, and so we need to consider that once it is completed, if that's the will of the board, and making sure we're providing that type of support.
Yeah, because it's a big investment.
Yep.
If we take care of it, it's a really lasting investment.
Absolutely.
I think it's prudent just to take care of when you build them.
I'm in agreement with the board on this one.
I think we're at the approval of landscape architect stage and authorized to advertise and solicit bits. We're pretty early on to kind of start working on what comes next in order to protect them from, for future use. Yes, absolutely. All right, do we have a motion?
Dr. Ball, move that we approve the rest of routine agenda A except item 16, that's full.
16, that's full. Thank you.
I'll second.
May I ask for a board vote, please? Ms. Alexander, is showing up.
Oh, um.
Let's roll.
Yep. I got this, I got this.
Thank you. Motion passes five yes, one no, and one absent. Okay, we're moving on to our consent agenda B. The public may address the board on consent agenda, I'm sorry, I am going to go back a little. A16, we are polling and leaving it out to come back another time.
It'll return at a future board meeting, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on, we have public comments on consent agenda B. Student matters. Each public speaker shall limit their comments to three minutes, and please speak your first and last name when you come up to the podium. Seeing none, do we have any board comments?
Dr. Ball, move we approve, it said that agenda B. I'll second.
May we have board vote, please? Thank you. Motion passes six, zero, and one absent. Okay, we have public comments on other action items. The public may address the board on other action items. Each public speaker shall limit their comments to three minutes, and please speak your first and last name when you come to the podium.
Good evening, President Ball, members of the board, Superintendent Young. My name is Chris Beach. I'm here in support of the proposal for nutrition services. This is a great way to add more positions that we greatly need in many places, and also to increase and expand current employees' hours and days of the year. Two weeks ago, I mentioned that there would be some job descriptions that need to be updated in order for positions to be posted. I also asked that we address all the job descriptions in nutrition services at the same time. It only makes sense to do it all at once, not come back and redo it again a year later. I am concerned, some of the board may not think that this is as an important thing to do. As last time, there was a comment about making this a long-term goal. I hope you think about this quite a bit more. There are many services that we provide that are not in our job descriptions. If we were no longer to provide these services, it would cause great disruption in our kitchens. We don't want that to happen. We want to continue to do what we do best for our schools and students. It is up to the board to ensure that there is no disruption. Once we meet negotiations for this, I feel very confident that it can be resolved quickly. We want to work with you on this. Please work with us on it. Thank you.
President Ball, members of the board, Superintendent Young, Rodrigo Contreras, CSA president. I share sentiments with Chris. We do have a lot of job descriptions in nutrition services that would like to be revisited. We can look at them, discuss them during negotiations on impacts and effects of nutrition services. So we look forward to working with you to be able to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. So the item OAI1, it's always a tongue twister for me, OAI1, nutrition services proposal, it's over.
President Ball, members of the board, we bring the nutrition services proposal back for your action from the previous board meeting. If you have any additional questions, we do have Dr. Betty Crocker here to address those.
Thank you. Any board comment?
I move we approve the item 20. I'll second.
And can we have board vote, please? Thank you. Motion passes. I think we all know how special this is to our nutrition services, so thank you for being here again. Thanks. All right, do we have any public comments on reports? The public may address the board on reports, and each public shall limit their comments to three minutes, and please say your first and last name as you come to the podium. Thank you.
President, Dr. Ball, members of the board, Lisa Lennon Wilkins, Lodi Education Association. You have in front of you board policy and board rule 4115 regarding evaluation and supervision in, of teachers. And I'm very concerned about this. There was something called the STAL Act that was passed in the early 2000s, and the STAL Act basically said that you cannot have, use evaluate, excuse me, assessments, whether they be local assessments or state assessments, to evaluate teachers without bargaining the impacts and effects. So this is being brought forward without any bargaining. The other thing that I had upon reading this is that it says the superintendent or designated shall assign the principal or other appropriate supervising personnel to evaluate certified staff. And he's, he or she will, shall ensure that the evaluation, evaluator, excuse me, possesses a valid administrative credential, is competent, and has been trained in the instructional methodologies used by teachers being evaluated. This is an issue because many of these principals have been out of the classroom for a long time, and things have changed. Is skilled in the supervision of instruction and techniques and procedures related to the evaluation of instruction, is familiar with, and has received training in the district curriculum priorities and practices, district standards for student progress, and district policies and procedures related to personnel supervision, performance evaluation, and staff development. So this is taken right out of the board rule. So here's my questions for you. When invited by a teacher in the past year, how many times is you as a board member showed up? You know, announced or unannounced? How many announced school visits have been made by each school board member in the last year? If they occurred, what was the purpose of the visit? How many classrooms were visited? And of the classroom visitors, visited, how were those chosen? I can say the same for many of our cabinet members. What kind of training have they had? Okay? What training are they receiving? The other thing that's in this board is that a teacher can be evaluated based on how many district professional development courses they go to. Well, let's put this back on administrators. How many courses are they being required to go to a year? How many, you know, what are their qualifications, and how are they keeping up with their qualifications to continue to evaluate teachers? So I have great reservations and oppose the language that is being proposed in both of these board rule and board policies. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Young, trustees, members of the community, and educators. I am Dr. Christopher Anderson, resident in Area 5, educator with over 24 years' experience in public schools, and the president of the Stockton Teachers Association, speaking as an individual. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed changes to policy 4115 to include students' assessments as part of his teachers' evaluation. This is wholly misguided, not supported by research, and could have unintended consequences. We all agree that classrooms should have well-educated professional teachers, and that school systems should recruit, prepare, and retain teachers who are qualified to do the job. However, public schools generally do a poor job developing and evaluating teachers. According to the Economic Policy Institute, some policymakers have come to believe that this failure can be addressed by calculating the improvement in a student's scores on standardized tests, and then relying heavily on these calculations to evaluate, reward, and remove teachers. While students' assessments can provide valuable data, relying on them for teacher evaluation is problematic, potentially unfair, and as student incomes are influenced by numerous factors beyond a teacher's control. Multiple factors influence student performance, including but not limited to socioeconomic background, family support, prior knowledge, and access to resources. Furthermore, value-added models, which attempt to isolate a teacher's impact on student learning, have proven to be unstable and unreliable, with rankings shifting significantly across years, models, and classes. Overemphasis on test scores leads to teaching to the test and neglects other important aspects of education, such as critical thinking, creativity, and social-emotional learning. Standardized tests can be biased against certain groups of students, leading to inaccurate and unfair evaluations of teachers. There is no compelling evidence that indicates either that the abarding teachers would actually be the weakest teachers, or that the parting teachers would be replaced by more effective ones. There is also little or no evidence for the claim that teachers will be more motivated to improve student learning if teachers are evaluated or monetarily rewarded for student test scores gains. The Gates Foundation launched an intensive partnership for effective teaching initiative, investing millions with the goal aimed at improving teacher effectiveness by changing how schools recruit, retrain, and reward teachers, with the hope that this would lead to better student incomes, outcomes, including higher graduation rates for college acceptance for low-income and minority students. However, a study by the Rand Corporation revealed that these efforts largely failed to achieve their goals, particularly for low-income and minority students. Teacher evaluation should be a holistic, comprehensive process that incorporates multiple measures of teaching effectiveness, including classroom observations, student work samples, student feedback, and teacher self-reflection. Finally, should you choose to make this revision, not only will you make Lodi Unified unattractive for new teachers, you will also likely drive many of your experienced veteran teachers out of the district. This revision is not good for our students, for teachers, or our community.
Good evening, Superintendent Young, distinguished board members. I am a community member. My name is Chris Munger. I live here in Lodi. I teach in Tracy. I've been a teacher, a high school English teacher for about 20 years. And I understand, as a teacher, I understand the need to track student progress. I understand the need to adapt and change instruction based on that progress to increase student progress. But research has shown that tying student progress scores to teacher evaluations is just simply not effective. is just simply not effective in improving student scores. We've seen this before. We've seen this before with No Child Left Behind. That was a failed idea that came out of Texas. And what it basically created is a rash of teachers teaching to the tests. Some districts in Texas were even caught manipulating student scores so that they were not penalized because their test scores were low. If this policy is enacted, the result would be very similar. Teachers would be teaching to the tests, and really only concerned about that so that they are not penalized. There are a lot of factors that go into student test scores, as Christopher Anderson pointed out. Education levels of the parents, income levels, even areas where they live go into this. I think it is important for this district to bargain with LEA to create a policy that would be both beneficial for the students and effective in bringing test scores up. Thank you for your time.
Good evening Superintendent Young, President Ball, members of the board. Welcome to our two-week break. And bringing this topic, there are many teachers that wanted to address this, but they are taking a well-deserved rest. So, I hope you understand that many did want to speak on this report item, but it was brought during, I don't know, not the best time for us to make comments on it. I do want to say that many of the things that Lisa Wilkins and Dr. Anderson and Mr. Munger brought up, so I'm not going to repeat them. This board, or former board, brought forward LUSD, R-BET MOU that had evaluation in the model. It was a pilot. At the end of the year, we did not get an official word, but heard, "R-BET is gone." Cease, over, done with. They threw out the pilot evaluation completely. Years of works that our members and administrators worked on, out the door. Now, that came to a committee of teachers and administrators that were working towards this, towards something that, based on teacher evaluation and support. We know that our evaluation system is archaic in its current model. But to put this on a policy, knowing that you threw something out and did not continue it with evaluation, with any kind of feedback, or coming to the table as a sunshine item, and bringing it in through the back door seems a little deceptive. The evaluation model should be bargained. It is a state requirement if you are going to base evaluation on test scores, which we know is faulty. Mr. Nava, Mrs. Alexander, you know what working at a Title I site is like. The socioeconomic disadvantages, the everyday trauma that our Title I students have lived through and are currently living through do affect test scores. Do you want well-rounded, adjusted citizens for our community? Or are you basing everything on a test score? And that's how you're going to keep or get rid of current teachers? Why have we, if data and these test scores are so important to judge evaluation on, why have we not seen these reports at board meetings like Mr. Porter has called to look at the data at sites? We do need to look at the data. We do need to self-reflect. But what you don't need is to base keeping a teacher, retaining a teacher, to a test score. Bring back things like PAR that we know are beneficial to teachers that are changing grade levels, that are changing sites, that, new curriculum in our district. We know that we've had a lot of that, and how effective the training is. So, I would please ask that you take this board policy off the agenda, bring items to the bargaining if you want to tie it to evaluation. And board policy like this should be addressed with our leadership in LEA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Young. My name is Rob Reynolds. I'm a parent of two wonderful children in Lodi Unified. I don't know what area I'm from, but Mr. Stroh, you're my board member, so thank you for what you do. Oops. I just lost everything. I apologize. I'm also concerned, as these educators have pointed out, about the proposed changes to this board policy. I think it's problematic. First of all, my kids hate state testing. Let's just be honest. They hate that two weeks in April or May, whenever it is. They hate going to school, sitting in front of a computer, doing something just because they're told that they have to. I love my kids. They're fantastic children. They do their best at school, but I know during those two weeks, they are phoning it in. And to put that on teachers, I feel is extremely unfair. Not only do they phone it in, but my son specifically, who's neurodivergent, how he performs on a test depends on whether he's wearing the right pants that day, whether he had egos for breakfast that morning, what kind of mood he's in, if his dog gave him licks that morning. And I would hate for his teacher to be evaluated based on the fact that Rayleigh's ran out of waffles that week. I'm also worried about what this means for their education in general. Somebody was talking about No Child Left Behind, and I remember those days when music programs, art programs, theater programs were gutted in favor of remedial math, remedial reading, and all of those kinds of things, just to prop up those scores. The reason that my kids go to school and get joy is because of those things. And in the earlier grades, my son is in fifth grade. I know that, you know, music is a separate thing for him, but a lot of the art stuff is done during those other subjects. And I would hate for him to lose out on those opportunities to do those creative things because we need to teach how to take this particular test, or what this question looks like, and how you go about answering it. I know that Lodi has some very fine educators. My kids have had nothing but the best. And I find that this is just completely unfair and uncalled for. Like I said, my kids love those extra classes. They bring them joy. They love school because of it, and this just seems like it will suck the joy out of learning for them. Thank you.
Hello, board. Hello, I'm Dr. Ball. So glad to see you there. And it's nice to see you there, Ms. Linderman. I didn't get it. I'm remiss. I haven't written my thing yet. I'm Kelly Hanson. I teach at Julia Morgan 6th Grade. As many of you know, if you remember, my class at the beginning of the year was entirely ones in math, and I had five twos in reading. Eighty percent of my class was third grade or lower in reading. I have had to go to evaluative meetings and bring my test scores to compare with the other two teachers. And I tell you, I leave. And I go and cry afterwards. I feel, excuse me, I feel very humiliated. And to think that you would use test scores to evaluate my teaching. It's been a very difficult career. You know I usually come to every board meeting, but at the end of the day, I am so tired from working so hard. I can't get myself here as much as I used to. One fortunate thing this year is I have had about five students from my past reach out and tell me that I was the most important teacher in their life, and I have shaped who they are. And I know I'm a great teacher. But the idea of putting that on everyone, that their test scores. Right now, I have this girl, I'm working so hard to get her ready so that she can just be in a seventh-grade classroom. She spent her entire fifth-grade year in the office or in the pod, not in the classroom. She disrupts my class every single day. She was out for three days a couple of weeks ago with the flu. I was amazed at how much we got done. That's the class I'm dealing with. And if you were to say, "That's what you're being evaluated on," it's wrong. It's just really, really wrong to even think that test scores matter that much. Because one of my kids, I'm like, "Why did your test score go down so much?" And he said, "I hate testing, Ms. Hanson. I just hate it." And I'm like, "But they're going to use this to evaluate whether you get a remedial class in seventh grade or not." And he says, "Oh, really? All right, I'll do better next time." And I'm like, "Okay, good for you. I want you to do math." And I know they have all grown, but it may not show as much as it should. And it's just, it's not the way to go out. And besides the fact that it's not the way to bargain, it's just not the way to introduce something that is that important. You know, in Chicago, all the teachers, they had that big cheating scandal when they were doing No Child Left Behind, and they all changed all their answers and did things like that. I mean, you will have people who will cheat. There's just no doubt about it. If you put their livelihood on the line, and they have kids who are not going to perform, you will have cheating. Is that what we really want? We test our kids way too much, especially with my kids not knowing hardly anything. The time I have to spend taking the test because what other class has done in one day with their testing, my class takes the whole week to get it done. And then I have to spend six of them the next week to Mr. Papas's office, where he gets them finished. But it's just a bad idea, and I really hope that you think about it and choose wisely. Thank you. Thank you for taking time. We have a, did you need a clarification?
Yeah, we can respond. First thing I would say is, you know, we are always available if there's a concern that somehow we're using an outcome on a state-adopted test to evaluate someone's performance. Currently, Lodi Education Association and the district have bargained the summary evaluation. And on that summary evaluation, it says, "Progress of pupils towards established standards of expected pupil achievement." The second area is instructional techniques and strategies used. The third in that area is the adherence to curriculum objectives. The fourth is the establishment and maintenance of a suitable learning environment. So, those are the categories. If there is a concern, and we're trying to identify the specific language that people are expressing a concern about the board policy, you know, the language of if applicable, and because we haven't talked to anyone, we don't know specifically what they're referring to. But this is really, if you look at the California Standards for Teaching Profession, I mean, what we've got written here is messing up. Not verbatim, but the concepts are the same. But there is no intention that we are tying in the outcome of an S-Back score and using that to evaluate a teacher. And in fact, if you look at the process, the evaluation process, both by way of observations and summary evaluation, are completed long before we receive the outcome of the S-Back. In fact, we don't get the completed information until really when teacher's on summer break. So, there is no intention on staff's part. It's to add the language. It's pretty much in alignment, but if there are concerns, it would've been great to know that in advance, what the specific language is. Your staff is just a bit confused because there is no intention of adding that to what has already been bargained and maintaining what exists currently is in the collective bargaining agreement, is what we follow.
So, you're saying that document that you just pointed to is already existing in the bargaining sessions? It's all there already?
This is in the LEA collective bargaining agreement. It is the form that is used for summary evaluations.
And can that be posted somewhere for public view?
It is in the, if you are on the webpage and you go to careers, you can look up the LEA bargaining agreement, and it's in the actual bargaining agreement, where you can find the copy.
I am going to request any public member, Ms. Wilkins, I'm going to take a moment here, to, the questions that came up this evening, or the comments that came up, if anybody has more explanation that's needed, please BCC the board on it and send them to Neil, because I would like to, and I'm sure all of our board members would like to know what those specific points and where you can give us an answer to that, pertaining to that particular question. So, it's not just up in there and we come back and say, "Oh, yeah, my question never was answered." I would request everybody to please send the question, BCC the board, so we're abiding by our Brown Act and pertinent matters, and then send it to Neil.
Just read what's been proposed. That's all I'm saying. Just read what's been proposed in red.
I am, please have a seat. Thank you. So, Neil, does that make sense? That you will receive the emails, BCC the board, and we want to know the answers that you will be sending over. Thank you. Do include the attachment of that particular paper in your reply.
Certainly.
Thank you. I am going to our report for proposed board, new board policy. Yeah, we're coming to it. We're coming to it. We have a policy before that on our agenda that needs to be addressed. The comments from the public have been made on all of the reports. We have 7131 relations with local agencies and 7213 School Facilities Improvement District. Ms. Olver?
Yes, President Ball, members of the board, Superintendent Young. These are two facility-related policies that needed to be added, and we're bringing it to the board for their approval.
Do we have any board comments on this particular policy?
7213, we definitely want to state how important this is, especially with the ladies that came from Jodinir Elementary about their school, the little, what do you call that? Blacktop?
Asphalt.
Asphalt. I think this is really important, and if not, like a safety committee to do those walks at each of the schools so that you can create that prioritized list. So, this is, thank you very much for the school facilities improvement.
I just wanted to thank you for your clarifications on the email, for taking the time to explain it. And I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, that made so much sense." So, thank you for that, and for always getting to me quickly on my questions. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our proposed revisions to board policies and rules. VPN Rule 4030 Non-Discrimination in Employment, and 411, 421, 4311 Recruitment Selection, and 4115. I am putting up Ms. Church on the spot now for it first.
President Ball, members of the board, these are updated policies for your review and consideration.
Thank you. Board comments on these policies. Sure, go ahead.
So, I did have the opportunity to talk to Neil and ask a lot of questions, especially about number one, and where I do agree that shared accountability is really important for teachers. I was also concerned about the language of number one in order to get the point across for utilizing the spreadsheet, the observation form. And so, I struggled with the language in number one and asked if we could consider a revision to number one so that it could look at certificated staff impact utilizing that.
Is that the Rule 4115?
Yeah, Policy, sorry, Policy 4115, number one. Consider revising it so that it's very clear on how that links to the observation form so that it's not stressing specifically student progress, but the impact of that certificated teacher with their teaching capability. And I do, I am interested always in, you know, how that data is being driven. And I do, I am interested always in, you know, how that, how that data is being driven, making sure that there's not any data bias, making sure that you have, you know, plenty of data points before you make decisions. But I know that that's the how, but at least in terms of the policy making, consider a rewrite.
Dr. Ball?
Yes, sir.
A point order.
Yes, sir.
Are we going through this in order of four oh three oh and then going down the line? Or are we just?
Yeah, no, good point. We have, what, four, five?
Oh, it's five oh or three oh?
Five of them in here. I would just say as the board member comes up with a comment they need to make.
Okay, so then we're looking at four one one five?
Ms. Lenderman's looking at four one one five.
Okay, I just want to make sure I knew where we were.
Sure.
So then on the backside, just looking at employees adherence to curricular objectives, it's very high level, maybe a reference or some more information of what that's in reference to. And then a suitable learning environment, making sure that that is clear in what that is, or maybe in a definition section.
More, you need more clarifications on these points?
Yes.
I'll refer to.
A board, because this is a public document and it is in the collective bargaining agreement. I can share this with all of you specifically from the observation form as it pertains to the establishment and maintenance of a suitable learning environment. It lists in bullet points, all the different pieces. So I can provide that to the board if you're interested, either now or I can send it to you as an email.
I think all board members would love to have that in an email would be fine, yeah?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On four one one five, why the change?
The change is a result of when reviewing, because this was adopted on, just approximately a month ago, on fourth of February. But according to Ed Code four four six six two, it requires that the board establish evaluation criteria which at a minimum, at a minimum must include those four.
So just so I know, Ed Code says that we're supposed to use tests to assess teacher performance of students?
Well, what it says.
Because your opening paragraph states that.
The top paragraph of the policy?
Yeah.
The top paragraph of the policy is.
Well, your district standards of expected achievement for the grade level, I'm assuming that would be assessment, or else how would you, how would you get that? That's your net job?
So specifically in the California code, under Ed Code four four six six two, it states, "The governing board of each school district shall establish standards of expected pupil achievement at each grade level in each area of study. The governing board of each school district shall evaluate and assess certificated employee performance as it reasonably relates to the progress of pupils towards the standards established pursuant to subdivision A and if applicable, the state adopted academic content standard as measured by the state adopted criterion referenced assessment, the instructional techniques and strategies used by the employee, the employee's adherence to curricular objectives, the establishment and maintenance of a suitable learning environment within the scope of the employee's responsibility." And then it goes on further.
Somebody who has taught for thirty eight years, I would love to see the district standards at all those, because I've never seen them.
Are you referring to the California state standards?
It says right here, "In progress toward meeting district standards of expected achievement of the grade level in each study." That's what you have in number one. I have never seen in the classes that I've taught in district, grade level, standards. Now that might've changed in six years. I haven't seen that. The instructional techniques and strategies used by the employee, that's about as vague as you can get.
This is just specifically from the.
I'm being real honest with you, Mr. Young, and I'm sorry I interrupted you. This whole thing is written very poorly. And as a teacher, former teacher, I find it, you're having people, and again, we're asking for people to do evaluation to get, we have nothing in there on how they're being trained or what they're doing. And we're having standards that I've never seen. We're having strategies and techniques that I've never, maybe I've seen PD on. Curricular objectives. Is there ELD curricular objectives for high school? Cause I know an ELD teacher.
Are you asking me like my opinion? I'm not sure what you're.
Mr. Young, I'm just saying, are there curricular objectives for ELD teachers in high school?
I would have to talk to our secondary.
And I know they're not.
Well, I would have to talk to Emma Martinez, you're asking me a specific question and I'm not involved directly in.
This is my biggest concern is that we have never established, and using PLC is my guideline, common assessments for all teachers, and I'm using high school as my guideline, for teachers within certain subjects to achieve assessment for. So you're asking them to be evaluated for something that you don't even really have. So my whole, I have a hard time if this whole thing ever was written. And I'm asking why now?
Well, we're bringing it forward because as CSBA has recommended, based on Ed Code four four six six two and the specific role of the governing board, these are the components that need to be included in the policy. So that's why we're bringing those.
And I'm getting back to you that you had our bet, which we spent millions of dollars on, working on an evaluation, which could've been made transparent throughout the district so all teachers could have seen what the evaluation was. You had a piloting program at schools. All that was washed out. You had PD that was being established where teachers who can't afford units could use to help them become better teachers. And all that was thrown out. And that was millions of dollars. And then tonight we're giving this, which I think is very vague. And in some cases, if I was a teacher, I'd find it insulting. Now, why tonight? Why are we bringing this forward? I don't know. That's my whole point. I just don't know why this has to be now. This could've been done with a committee meeting together, what we thought was best, that met Ed Code and with the teachers. Are you doing this with CSEA? Are you doing this as admin? Are you doing it with site admin? And the answer is no. It's just the teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. We're, we're just gonna have, this is a report, we're presenting a report. I would like for us to have more clarification on this. You're gonna send us specific emails on the questions being asked by the public and let's take it from there. It doesn't have to come back as an action item ASAP.
No, that, that's fine. And there's no specific timing other than we continue to need to update our org goals and this is specific to the Ed Code requirements.
Yeah, we do have some more board comments that we're gonna continue with.
I go, I'd be echoing Courtney, so as a teacher that mostly did at-risk students, ELD students, special programs, and this just, it needs to be worded more carefully and more specifically because I remember even in the, well, mid eighties, early nineties, different items that would come over in my career and it would, if I'm getting judged online, when I'm talking to my friends and their kids are going to Samford when they graduate and I, I can think of two offhand that I arrested for murder while I was teaching. So it's, it was a different population, so. When I read this, it was kinda, tied me up. So I would just be echoing some of the comments, so.
Thank you.
Can I get a point of clarification? Are you referring to the policy in its entirety or are you specifically relating your comments to the red section, the only section that we're bringing for revision?
I think the concern is with the newer section, so that's.
Red section.
The red section, because you can see where they've added in and they've lifted and cut the case. And I applaud that we want, we want to help improve education and we're also, we're all here for student achievement. But yeah, the red section to me is poorly done.
So I guess the question I would ask of the board as you continue to deliberate is, we don't have to align it to Ed Code forty four six six two. You are the Board of Education. We're doing that at the recommendation of the California School Boards Association and the specific language written in the Ed Code. But you are the board. If you don't want to change the policy from what exists, which is in its entirety in the black language, not in the red, that's fine.
Well, you take the whole red out, go to remote effective teaching and you've covered Ed Code.
Well, I, whatever the board is interested in doing, I'm just saying, it was brought because of Ed Code four four six six two and that's the specific language from it. This is in no way changing the negotiated observation and evaluation process that has been established through bargaining, in no way. So I, but that's fine. Board, if you don't want that language, we don't have to include it.
Okay. I have Ms. Alexander.
You know me and these policies. I, a couple of things that I just want to throw out there. I would really encourage, especially the use of acronyms for teachers in general is overdose, but when we see USC, CCR, I default to credence, clear water. And then I go to, oh wait, you know, is it college career readiness or is it this? CFR, CRD, I would really like a precursor on all of these that has been stated somewhere so that people don't have to look them up, that they are in all of our policies and easy to learn. I also, I'm gonna combine my notes that I wrote on the rule as well. I thought we were, we were beyond the he, she, and that, and we were very good and diligent about neutral and inclusives and those he, she's are back in there and I, I have a problem with that.
Yeah, and just to speak to that, when Valerie does a final look through, those always get updated because that is not a revision of the policy, that's just updating the language.
So this, I'm gonna state things out because I feel, I had a couple of issues with the new revision. It was curious to me because it said the superintendent designation shall assess the performance of certificated instructional staff. And then it says that you will look at appointing those that are trained. So I feel like there's a little bit of contradictory, so it goes back to making both of these work together. Also in the rule, it was struck out and said that we will provide help to new teachers and then it was changed to we will endeavor to, no, we won't, we will provide. The teacher was telling me if I'm not providing help. And so I have a problem with that as well. Also, the rule says at the top, it should, we shall not include the use of publishers' norms established by standardized tests. And then in the policy, it says, so I feel that this shouldn't be brought forward until we really have a chance to go through to a committee, like Mr. Porter said, where we can fine tune this. I don't like this being thrown out here and suddenly going, having people upset because as a teacher, I would be upset too. I was teaching when merit pay was coming out and that was crazy. When we look at our special ed kids, when we look at our ELs, oh my gosh, I totally oppose evaluating the teacher's subjectiveness based on a child's performance. Oh my goodness, no. We need to be. It's horrible, I'm sorry. I feel like, let's start over. I'm gladly volunteer to be part of any committee to work on this because I served with our bet to make this happen. And we had it and it was good and, and it's gone. It's like many things. We just get into it, it's good and it's gone. Let's fix this, folks.
Thank you, Sherri.
Only give comments on policy four one one five, is it too late?
Well, no, you could, you could just hold policy on all five of these in this report.
Okay. Can I also give a comment on rule four one one five?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Only, I mean, I definitely agree. We need to go back and align these, a lot of what Sherri said, I had commented and commented and asked for clarification, especially on all the red items, a lot of subjective criteria. These wording never was circled twice online as well. But I, I am interested in the frequency of evaluations as well and kind of looking at this Ed Code four four six six four. I would like some clarification, Mr. Young, on what you noted on not being, needing to follow specific laws and statutes. I believe last week we, or was it last week when Mr. Warren noted that was I asking us to violate statutes? Can we, can we be a little bit, a little bit more clear? Can you provide some guidance for me? I'm a new board member.
What would you like guidance on specifically?
Our boards are not supposed to be violating statutes, correct?
The Board of Education makes decisions for the district through its role in governance. Our recommendation wouldn't be to disregard Ed Code and statute because that is the law that exists. So I, I guess that's my answer. I'm not, I'm not sure what is the concern that you're bringing forward.
Just making sure we're consistent, just getting some clarification, point and clarification. Are we allowed to extend or make, make modifications to requirements or not? So maybe, maybe a, more information. I'll send in some questions.
Okay.
In regards to that. But the ten years is something that we should look at as being a concern for the evaluation frequency as well.
Thank you. Kristen, Alice, do you have any comment?
I have no, no comments on that. I know that when we had the R book, we talked about it, we were going to an evaluation process and all of a sudden that died. So I was excited about it because we need to have an evaluation process that is, that's a good job, not, not just forms of kids, but forms of teachers themselves and, and the outcomes that they have. That's, that's all I have to comment on it. This to me is, is including in the things that we have here on the evaluation and supervision is needed, but you know, here again, we got two things going. Do we, do we evaluate on the progress of the students? Do we evaluate on the progress of how the teachers perform and, and getting the performance of the kids themselves? I don't know. It's interesting.
Thank you. Well, I think we have a bit of a direction here for our cabinet here to bring us more clarifications on this particular report, the board rule and the policy. The rest of them seem fairly straightforward and.
Dr. Ball?
Yes, sir.
I have a question about four oh three oh, since we didn't go in order.
Yeah, please, go first.
What was the number, excuse me?
Four oh three oh.
Four zero, please.
And why is four, four one one five, four one one five different? They have two different things.
There's a policy and a rule.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure I knew, I mean, I have medication for it, so I'm trying a little bit. Anyway, four oh three oh, just for my help here, we quote CCRD, CCR as Ms. Alexander talked about. I mean, I don't know what CRD means. I don't, I mean, I get it, I get what CCR is, but if this is a new policy for the board, where's Ed Code in this? On four oh three oh. You don't cite Ed Code at all. And I don't see any CSBA anywhere. So I see, all I see is CCRs and government code and lab code and federal, I don't see anything in dealing with California Ed Code or four oh three oh.
There's Ed Code two hundred. There's Ed Code 200-270, prohibition of discrimination.
Yeah, I'm on the second one, I guess, 4030.
If you look at the section referred to as legal references, you will find the specific areas that are government code, including the Ed Code 200 to 270 as it pertains to discrimination.
I don't see any Ed Code on this rule. Is that at the bottom?
Yes, it's down on the bottom where they...
Am I looking at the wrong 4030?
Well, they're, both the rule and the policy have Ed Code coded as 200-270, prohibition of discrimination. It's in the part of very last page.
I've gone to page, I'm on page seven.
Of the rule or the policy?
This is off the rule.
Yeah, so on page seven of the rule, if you go right below CA Constitution, Article One, Section One, the silly code, and then there's the Ed Code noted here.
200-270, prohibition of discrimination. Okay, very good. Because it was never cited, I didn't see it. Okay, I was just curious. And then the other ones.
There's a lot of citation.
Yeah, it's a ton to go through.
I have to use glasses.
So do I. All right, I was just curious. And then, thank you very much. And then the last one about 415, just to go back to that. The students have no teeth in taking a test. There's no student in the game. They don't get, they get their driver's license. They get their off-campus card. So when they take the assessment test, they don't care. And then we're going to rely on that on teacher performance.
It is, again, that is not the case.
It sends assessments, Neil, sorry.
But we have an agreed upon negotiated observation and evaluation process.
Well, I'd agree with Dr. Ball. If you sent us an email, you can go through that.
Okay.
We can have a good lengthy conversation on this. And if we need to create a committee to go through this, I'm open to that.
We can certainly discuss that.
There's no more rule or policy that needs to be ASAP changed if we're not in agreeance with what needs to be done.
Hundred percent.
Perfect. Well, thank you. I think this is a very positive discussion that we have. In no way should it be to put someone at a bad position of question and answer. But I do appreciate everybody's comments on this, your input. It greatly matters in taking the right decisions for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you for the good discussion.
All right, we'll move over to our Board Advisory Committee reports. Do we have any board members that have an advisory committee report? Thank you. Comments from the public. A 20-minute time period has been allocated for the public to address the board on matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If there are numerous speakers, speaker time limit shall be adjusted. To share materials with the board, please provide them to the staff for distribution. Due to restrictions under the California Brown Act, the board cannot engage in discussion regarding public comments. Please state your first and last name as you come to the podium. I'm just going to randomly pick one. Anthony Lynn. Kelly Hansen.
Hello. Nice to talk with you again. I'm Kelly Hansen, sixth grade teacher. And thank you for that wonderful discussion. I appreciate that. I was at a training today because that part of the evaluation would not bother me because I love to be educated. I get a lots of PDs. But I don't think it's fair to do it to everyone. But you know, the last year, I asked you if there was a whole list of things that didn't cost money that teachers wanted to have. And I said the relationships between our administration and our teachers were so poor that it would be nice if you guys could just pick one thing and do that for us. And you know, nothing came forward. There were no changes that helped ameliorate the situation. And today at the training, Evan Martinez did this wonderful thing that she did one time before after school. And I was too tired to really pay attention to it and see how important it was. And watching it again, I was like, oh, this will be perfect for my guys, my kids, because they are like ELLs. And one of the things we had to do was pick an adjective, and we were describing educators. And what came up from one of the younger teachers was how underpaid educators are. And we all laughed, and you know, and I said, come to the board meeting and talk to them. They're not here. But one thing that has consistently bothered me this year is, and it's so petty, is how we have a cost of living rates that every other employee's group has gotten. And they got, I'm not sure if they got retroactive pay or if they had the same stipulation that you've put on ours that until we settle, we can't get the cost of living rates. And it won't be retroactive when we do get it. And I would just kind of like the board to realize that there are a lot of teachers who are very unhappy with situations here in Lodi. Everyone I talked to agrees that teaching is no longer as easy as it used to be. There are so many more stresses now, so many more discipline things, so much more you can't, you don't have as many of those joyful teaching moments that should be a part of every child's education, should be a part of every teacher's daily life with their children. And I just think it would be really nice if you decided, you know what? There's no reason to withhold the cost of living rates from our teachers. The cost of living has gone up. Cost of living is going to go up even further. And it would be nice if you restored it and if you went retro and gave us all the money that we are deserved and let the bargaining go on. And another thing about the extra money that was found that was added, was going to be added to our insurance, the fact that Leo wants it to go to every single member is a good thing. And it shouldn't be a problem. And also, I want to say again about the lawyer. As long as we have lawyers, they're going to find reasons for us not to agree on things. So think about getting rid of that lawyer. Thank you.
Maria Marin. Maria Marin. Victor Ward.
Good evening, board, Superintendent. First, I want to thank you for your service. It's never easy, so I appreciate that. My company has built something which is called Real Time. It's a digital video yearbook. And it's not intended to replace the traditional yearbook, because that's awesome. But the traditional yearbook lacks in some things. And we've all heard the phrase, picture is worth a thousand words. And if my math is correct, a one-minute video is worth about 2,000 pictures. And right now, we have yearbook staff, teachers, students that are working on creating a yearbook in the year 2025, but they're using tools from 1925. And so I just brought a few things that might remind you of 1925. The first is the transistor radio. I used to listen to all my, the Laker games, well, from Southern California. The Laker games on the transistor radio. This one's all even for me. I had to pull it off of eBay. The Polaroid camera. Remember those Polaroids, how the picture would come out? Those were high-tech, you know, 100 years ago. And of course, the Relica relics. The roll rebook. Now, we've all moved past this, but the yearbook has not. And I would like to add that, you know, usually you go to the board meetings, there's something about your sports programs, your VAPA programs, your AMS programs. None of those are done justice by a page in the yearbook. Wouldn't it be better to actually hear an orchestra or to hear music? Wouldn't it be better to actually see the touchdown pass or the shot from midfield? So again, I'm not sure how much time I have. But the last thing I'll say is this is Prop 28 eligible, and you can actually turn Prop 28 money, which doesn't give you many degrees of freedom. You can sell the yearbook and now get some unrestricted revenue. It's not going to be a lot, but hey, every dollar counts. Thank you very much.
Benny Yates.
Hi, Dr. Ball, Mr. Young, members of the board. It's good to come to you during break. And I come to you to share with you about what's happening in special ed. But just one side note, the drain got put in a couple of days. Thank you. The rain came. It was still not the low point, but it's better. Nobody took a dive or swim. Thank you. And I wanted to say that a MOU was passed to our bargaining team. I'm not a member of the bargaining team. I'm just on the LEA Executive Board. And Kelly is one of the nicest people I've ever met. And I heard it was about special ed. And so I went to the special ed teachers and just wanted to start listening to what they thought about it. And you know, special ed teachers are awesome. We went and did a little axe-throwing thing at Lincoln Center. And you've got to throw axes with special ed teachers, because I threw one. It hit the wall, hit the ground, and all I heard was, you threw that really hard. Good job. Try again. We'll give you another turn. Because special ed teachers are supportive like that. And so when I asked them about their MOU, they said, it's a good try. It's, it's, thank you for going in the right direction. But it lacks. Now, the good news is special ed teachers are awesome in that they always want to help. And so we're getting together to help make it better because we see the same thing you saw, and that's why we said good try, is there's, as I said, with, every student should have a qualified teacher by third grade. And we have schools that will not have that. We have students who will not have had a teacher by third grade. But we want Lodi Unified to be the place where every special ed teacher wants to come. Where we start grabbing teachers from other districts because they want to work with our amazing special ed staff, our principals. And, because students are great everywhere. But we can create amazing working conditions for special ed programs and teachers so that our students can thrive, so that our teachers can thrive. And so we're going to have lots more conversations. Some of them are even looking at it during the break because they care. And so thank you for an initial first step. But we got a ways to go if we're really going to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to comments from employee group representatives. The representatives from each employee group will have five minutes to comment on non-agendized items.
President Dr. Ball, members of the board, Mr. Young, members of the cabinet. It's spring break. Teachers are on a well-deserved break. And the attitude is they are exhausted. They're exhausted in trying to deal with the issues in their classroom that extend outside of their classroom, the discipline issues, the mental health issues. And it's not only with the students, it's also with the parents. I'm hearing a lot more about issues in dealing with parents and not feeling backed up by our administration. And that's concerning because we all know that it's a three-legged stool, right? Education is not propped up by just two legs, a teacher and a student. We need the parents involved too. But they have to be cooperative. And sometimes you have to convince people to be cooperative rather than combative. And that takes a lot of time and energy, and it takes it away from the classroom. So we need to have our students, our teachers feeling supported. And I think that maybe the district might need to look at reaching out to parents. I know we used to have parenting classes a long time ago. And some schools, some of the Title I schools are still doing it. I think it needs to go beyond Title I schools, and it needs to go beyond elementary. Because I think there's bad behavior that is seen on social media and regular media as well that if you behave badly, you're going to get what you want. And that just isn't always the case. And parents need to know that. Students need to know that. And our admin need to enforce it when it's necessary rather than to run away and tell a teacher to deal with it. And I think that's kind of the overall attitude with the district, that not only in bargaining, but also in just our day-to-day, that there's a lack of cooperation. And I don't know how to change that. People want to, admin want to impose, parents want to impose. Rather than working together, do it my way, or it's a highway, or I'll have your job, or my kid will have your job. Kids tell students, teachers that all the time, my parent's going to come in and you're going to be fired. I have situations where teachers are afraid to discipline a child because of the wrath of the parent, and they don't get backed up from the admin or the district for that matter. You know, another thing, going back to cooperation, is there used to be something called PAR. And it was peer assistant review, peer assistant review. And for teachers who got on a professional improvement plan or a PIP, so I'm trying to say all the acronyms. You would have a peer help you out and help make you a better teacher. They would could, they would get, the district would help fund release time for them to come and observe you in your classroom. And they would give you, hey, try this, or have you thought about this? Or hey, here's an activity that, it's not in the textbook, but it's really going to support this learning, and I found it really helpful, you know? And they'll bring their materials to share with you and things like that. Again, cooperation. I would love to see the district fund PAR again. It got defunded. It has not come back in, I don't know, 20 years or, well, a little less than that. But you know, 15 years? What a great cooperative program to get your peers to help you out, okay, to come in. I know sometimes when teachers are on professional improvement plans, they'll give release time for a teacher to go observe someone else. Again, let's reverse that. How about having another teacher come in and observe the teacher who's on a PIP? And say, hey, this is where I'm seeing, you know, the holes are. How can we tighten these up? I think that would be a great thing. So again, it all goes back to if we want to make Lodi a place where, as Mr. Yates said, everybody wants to come, we need to do it where everyone feels that they're working together and they're supported not only by their admin and the parents, but their peers as well. And I would love to see us go back to that. I don't know how to do that, but I'm just going to tell you the attitude that I'm feeling right now in this district that I've felt for years is you run into more walls than you get people to say, hey, how can we knock these down together? Thank you.
President Ball, members of the board, Superintendent Young. I'd like to report that we have negotiated with Mrs. Clark Church and her team. I'm sorry. I've known her for like 15 years. Yeah. We have reached four tentative agreements, MOUs. They'll come up to your consideration. They have to go through our members. They're currently on their six-ten process, policy process. We've also been having a lot of members coming up to us expressing that, you know, their pay, their job description, they're doing more things than what they're currently being paid for. So if you guys could do anything to assist us, help them, we would greatly appreciate it. I'd also like to express to Mrs. Wilkins that we also support the teachers. We know what they go through on a day-to-day. We know what they go through on a daily basis. And I'd just like to express that we are behind them as well, so, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments today?
I have a real good one. A sentiment from Deep Flora from Ripon named Susan Peterson as the Honorary Woman of the Year. Quite an award for her. She's been in our district for 27 years and she's been a principal. And now she's in elementary, she supervises the elementary school principals on the campus this year in Stockton and Lodi. I want to congratulate her.
So today, I want to call to action and bring to attention to our community a principle that shapes the future, but also holds the power to define it. And that's going to be data-driven problem solving. We live in a life and a world that's brimming with complexities and challenges. Resources are fragile and finite. Energy is precious, time our most fleeting commodity and definitely cannot be squandered. The question before us is simple and yet profound. How can we channel our efforts into activities that matter most? Conserving our resources and energy will drive meaningful impact. And for me, the answer lies in the criticality of data. When guided by data, we harness the ability to identify problems with precision, prioritize solutions with purpose, and act with unwavering focus. We move past guesswork and assumptions into a realm where every decision is informed, every action deliberate, and every outcome impactful. But one of the problems that seem insurmountable is the challenges that resist resolution. It's here that we embrace the power of the word yet, especially for our students. So I want you guys to imagine the young girl in your classroom that once was inspired by graphs of progress and impact, now standing on the global stage redefining the very boundaries of science. Imagine the boy who once marveled at patterns of nature that is growing up to paint masterpieces that touch the soul of humanity. I think when we look at what we're doing here today, we want to imagine that child with the promise of yet in their hearts and transform the impossible to possible. And yet, for this vision to become a reality, we must remember a vital truth. We are models they follow, all of us. Our actions, our decisions, our integrity to serve as we live and leave a living footprint for them to follow that impacts our futures and their lives that extend well beyond these doors and beyond our decisions today. When we prioritize with purpose, they learn to dream. When we solve problems with determination, they learn perseverance. And when we lead with compassion, they learn to be good humans. So children do not simply inherit the world. They inherit the values we embody and the examples we set. So if we want to see tomorrow's Nobel laureates, scientists, engineers, hopefully more engineers, and humanitarians, we definitely have to live as though their future depends on it. And so, oh, sorry, my notes kind of have a long speech, sorry, sorry team. I just want to make sure. So the power of data-driven problem solving extends far beyond the here and now. It is the force that drives us, and it's the purpose in which it's going to drive us towards impactful activities. And it's a gift that we can give to our future generations. So when we consider how to move forward, let us think of how we can move forward with data and how to utilize that data to better propel us to the future. So let's shape tomorrow and make a difference for our children. Thank you.
Wow, I'm going to keep mine simple. Well said. I just, I know the teachers and people that are up here and the employees that have given up their time tonight. I wish everybody a wonderful two-week break. Take care of yourselves, rejuvenate, re-energize. Fourth quarter, we all have lived through that before. And be kinder to each other and yourselves above all.
I'll keep mine simple. I just wanted to share that I, and a few others here too, had a really good time reading to some of the younger kids. And it's something I don't do very often, so it's kind of nerve-wracking for me going in there with the body there. And then it always turns out to be a really fun experience, and the kids get a big kick out of it, you know. And so I enjoy doing it and going to a couple of different schools and running into ex-students, being teachers and security guards. And at the last study session we had, one of my ex-students came up, and she was very quiet in class, but he was Superintendent Patterson now. And he started out at 18 as a custodian in LUSD. And his daughter also sits on the ward here. Anyway, that was kind of neat.
That's it.
Well, thank you all for taking time to be here during your spring break. Appreciate that. I will get a spring break someday. Someday, a spring break, a summer break, we'll see. But thank you, everybody, for your input and everything. And as a board, we value your comments. They do not fall on deaf ears, I can tell you that personally. Everything you say makes a difference in how we shape the future of our district, and your cabinet takes it all very seriously as well. So thank you for all your comments and your input that you give. And I appreciate our cabinet in putting the time that you do and the efforts that you do and everything. And sitting there quietly, Michael, he signed each one of us in today. Thank you. Michelle, thank you for always being there quietly and just getting it done. Appreciate everything you do. I wish you all a good remaining spring break and be safe and be kind to yourself. Thank you.